Amanez. Morales.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Roscoe.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Arzo.
Here.
Arenas. Uli.
Here.
Megan.
Here.
Jones.
President.
Lencardo.
President.
And I'm here, I'm here as well, Tony. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we're on to item 3.4, which is Statement of Policy and Questions for Perspective Chief of Police. I know there's several memoranda which suggests additional questions. I think all of those questions are good ones to be included. Let's go to the public first, see if the public has any comments. First, Mr. Soto.
Yes, good evening, Council. SB 1421, I mean, it's real simple. The Police Officers Union is in violation of the law, the Police Department is in violation of the law, yet they enforce the law. This is, this is like, like confusing to me. They've had two years in order to obey this law. Now we got homeboy Tovar on the east side laying dead in the street, okay, and he had absolutely no weapon, yet three officers fired. I could see if one officer felt threatened. Three officers is an execution. They held court in the street. This is offensive, this should be offensive to every single member on this council, including the officer that's listening. Officer Tyndall, Captain Tyndall, you should be offended by what your officers did to this human being. You ain't the judge, you ain't the jury, we got prosecutors for that, we've got judges for that, we've got a process that Tovar was denied. You held court in that this is an execution. These are the types of issues that we're talking about, and we need a chief that is going to be able to sit there and have the humility to accept that there is racism existent in that police department. There are officers that do not, that are not worthy of wearing the badge that says San Jose PD. They are not worthy to stand and to protect the citizens of my community, okay? They just are not, and we need an officer that has the humility and the fortitude to be able to address these issues and start cleaning some house. That Facebook page where all of these officers were talking about creating nooses to hang a woman in a hijab. This is disgusting, it is offensive, and this department needs to have the humility to accept it as such. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brinkman?
Hi, thank you. Good words by Paul Soto, thank you. These times may be difficult, but consider they may only be a reflection of state government at the international level continuously practicing forms of state-sponsored violence extremism, shock doctrine, and disaster capitalism. I feel these issues are... Again, these, these times may be difficult, but most everyday people from local areas are not difficult, and where local community, and where local people are difficult at this time, I feel most in some way do want to make, make amends and do well for their friends, their neighbors, their neighborhood, and their community. It is up to ourselves with the ideas of peace, not war, and our better human ideals, including the ideas of equity and reimagined, that can invite all sides how to address current street violence and other issues. So overall, I feel we don't necessarily have to be locked into our previous status quo thinking at this time. As I have written and spoken about many times now, Deputy Chief, Deputy Chief Anthony Mata is fluent in Espanol and has good temperament, has a good temperament that can work well with all parts of the community and with the issues I've addressed above. I feel this is an important time in history for him to become police chief. If nothing else, he seems to have a gentle, intelligent, progressive, inclusive thinking that may be an important example in the search of a new police chief at this time. Thank you for the words of Paul Soto. I mean, we're simply at a time to really bring out the better parts of ourselves, and, and we need to look for a police chief that will, you know, be a part of that work and effort. Thank you.
Thank you. The person with the phone number ending 5140?
Yeah, I hope the new chief doesn't do what Eddie Garcia did in June of 2016 and allow a bunch of violent thugs to beat up peaceful Trump supporters who are just trying to go to a rally. I also hope that they do hire the guy from Minnesota, because it'd be funny to actually watch them San Jose PD retreat like Minneapolis didn't have the police department burned down. Could you imagine that? Probably not, but, you know, I, I hope that the police chief is able to protect all citizens of this, of this town based, not based on their politics or anything else, and that's what Eddie Garcia and Sam Lencardo did in June of 2016. Sam, of course, will lie to you and tell you otherwise, but we need a police chief that helped protect the Trump supporters a couple of weeks ago. Oddly enough, they were protected because of the shame that the San Jose Police Department did. Two hundred and fifty guys standing around playing pocket poker, it was disgraceful. It was clear on any, any video you saw, how they count, how they, they, they were cowards that day and did absolutely nothing. They wouldn't even help people up after they were hit on their head and knocked out. I've never seen something so disgraceful in my whole life, and San Jose PD likes to say they're not trained enough, there's not enough people, you know, look, excuses are like assholes, everyone has them and they all think, and the ones that come from San Jose-
Sorry, you're not speaking again tonight. There's no use of expletives during these meetings. Sharon DeNoah?
Thank you for that. I'm Sharon DeNoah. I'm here today as an individual of about twenty years of experience in the criminal justice system with research, prison reform, mental health, and most folks know me from my work here doing, working on human trafficking. I want to state that I'm asking the city to consider a chief who can create changes and begin to shift culture in partnership with community. I ask to choose a candidate who knows the culture and history of the police department itself in San Jose, but also knows the history and diversity of these in our city. This past year has prompted the need for immediate change. So much of the defund conversation relies on collaboration with community-based organizations, advocates, and services. We see this working effectively with human trafficking, in part because of the support from city council. So I ask the next chief have a demonstrated partner, has demonstrated partnership with regards to community-based organizations in this kind of work, especially with regards to marginalized communities. In terms of working on issues of gender-based violence, we have seen and we anticipate further increases to exploitation and abuse due to increased isolation, marginalization, and economic desperation. Ask the next chief prioritize special victims and have a demonstrated experience on this issue. I want to thank Councilmember Arenas for also identifying these priorities in the recent memo, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll just return to the council. Dave, I know you, you wanted to make some comments first before we jump into comments in the council.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, this item is, is for the adoption of the policy and questions that we would provide to the final candidate. I, I do want to update the camp, the council in public. Around four o'clock today, we did get word of the withdrawal of one of the external candidates from the process. This is actually the second withdrawal from when the time we made our, our finalist list, so the, the police chief from Minneapolis has withdrawn. You know, through this process, we're, we're looking to achieve a candidate pool that is obviously diverse, and also what we were hoping to achieve is, is a mix of internal and external perspectives, and so, and this is no discredit to our internal candidates. I just think for, for us as a city, it's important that we have these different perspectives and are able to evaluate them through the process, so we'll need to regroup a bit, and we'll do that over the next day or so, but just wanted to make sure the council had this latest information that is probably out in the media by now as well, so, and we stand ready to answer any questions, and certainly we have reviewed all the memos that have been submitted, and look forward to incorporating all of the, the questions into the processes we move forward.
Hey, Dave. Councilmember Frost?
Yeah, thank you, and appreciate that update. I, I was not aware of that, and I think, Dave, I know, so we have one remaining external candidate then, correct?
That's correct.
And, and that candidate, Jeremy Bowers, was actually formerly with San Jose PD as well, so he's external at the moment, but, but had, obviously had a history with the city.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. We'll look forward to kind of hearing back. I think, you know, I, I don't know if it's something that you're able to, to, to share, but hopefully checking in privately, kind of getting an understanding of, of, I think we had two sort of last minute withdrawals from the, from the process, so would like to be able to learn more as we move forward, but I'll, I'll stick to at least for now the questions, and I apologize, I was not able to get these in writing, but I wanted to add two, and then had an opportunity to look over my colleagues, and, and I think obviously everything's sort of worthy of being added into the, to the, to the process here. So recently Dallas PD made headlines, and it wasn't just for hiring Eddie. They announced that they would no longer be responding to certain calls for service, like stolen cars, reckless damage, runaway kids, stuff like that, and this is actually right prior to Chief Garcia headed over there, or heading over there. It was quickly rescinded just recently in, and made clear that, that Dallas made clear that these are only recommendations from an internal study and that they had not been finalized yet, but I do think the concept is worth discussion, and we're hearing that happening all across the country, and so the question I'd like to add would be, I'd like to know what calls for service are candidates believe should be looked at and considered as no longer requiring a police officer response, and maybe rather another professional could, could respond. And then the second question, similarly, we'll be asking our next chief to help us lead our reimagining public safety process, and I'd like to ask our candidates how they feel about stepping into that process, and how do they plan to generate participation and buy in from officers, and so I'd like to add those two, and, well, I guess, sorry, the last one was, was two questions, one part, and then the first one was one question, but I'd like to add those, and then I'm, I'm assuming my colleagues want to talk about their memorandums, but I'm happy to, to support all of those requests as well, and-
Maybe you can make a motion to-
Yeah, that's what I'll do. So I'll make a motion to approve the questions I just added, and then all of the memorandums submitted by my colleagues.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Sparza?
Thank you, and I did want to follow up on the announcement. Did I miss why, why they pulled out?
I didn't say, you know, it's somewhat speculative on, on our part, council members, so I, I'm not sure I'd feel comfortable, you know, repeating the speculation.
And probably, I'm guessing Nora would probably counsel us too, since this isn't noticed, this is probably-
Sure, sure. I think it's relevant because we are providing questions, and it is timely, and it's public, and I understand the noticing and the agendizing. I just, I think that we as a council should have that discussion in public. We went on a search and, you know, did some contracts, and, and, and I have some questions about that process, and I think the community does as well, and, and we should have that discussion in public, so that's, that's what I will say about that.
Could I suggest that maybe you make a friendly amendment to Councilmember Parlois to agendize that, either an open session or closed session, whatever you prefer?
Sure, and I, so I'll make that amendment if Councilmember Parlois will accept that amendment, and I'll leave that to Dave Sykes and Nora Freeman on whether that is an open or closed session. I do think we owe it to the public to give some information, but understand that all are part of that discussion will need to be in closed or open session, so that's my amendment.
Okay, and that's okay with the Vice Mayor, right? Okay. Yes.
Thank you. And so I, I wanted to talk about a few things, and I, I, the reason I submitted a memo and I wasn't as specific as our Vice Mayor and some of my colleagues who did some wordsmithing in their memos, I did put in the language, and I specifically looked at question five. Our problem is not, it's, I mean, yes, we have hiring issues, but I think that's more budgetary issues in terms of bodies, but we actually have a very diverse police force in, in the rank and file, where, where we've all been to, or not, our two new colleagues will get to go to graduation, which is super exciting, and it's just so much fun, and, and you can see how diverse the SJPD really is, you know, when it comes to the rank and file. Where it's not diverse is at the top, and we have a command staff in an extremely diverse city. We often brag about having the largest Latino population in Northern California. We brag about, we fight with Orange County about who can, who has the largest Vietnamese-American population, but we're the city and they're the county, so we each kind of get number one in that regard, right, and, and, and we have just how many languages spoken at home throughout our city, and, and, and we have a command staff that is all white except one, right, and, and so when I read question five, we have a diverse pool of talent, we have that, and, and, but it's not moving up, and so I wanted to explain that that's why I put that question down in my memo, and I underlined it to have the focus be on hiring assignments and promotions. Those assignments and promotions determine the trajectory of someone's career, and we need to see changes in our police department. Another aspect of that question that I submitted that I think is important is that, you know, all of the candidates are leaders, they are all leaders, and so what I want to hear is, and what I think the community deserves to hear, is what have they already done within their leadership positions that they have held up to date? What have they done? Not what, what will they do, not just what will they do once they become chief, but what will they do, what have they already done to, to promote the kind of, to be more inclusive that our city deserves to have, and then I wanted to give some feedback on another question that I posed, because I think it's important, and so the other question I submitted was that a few months ago racist Facebook posts were made by current and former SJPD officers, and these posts were exposed by the media, and what will a, as chief, right, what will you do to weed out this type of racism and xenophobia so that it never happens again? One, we need to have a chief that can actually have these conversations and not run from it. Two, we need a chief that is focused on culture and changing that culture, and three, we need a chief that does not normalize this behavior, and so, and lastly, I mean, I, I don't feel that we as a city have, have gotten answers whenever things like this come up, and so our public deserves to have that conversation. And so, so I wanted to explain why I submitted those questions and what I was looking for, particularly in that first question. It's not that we don't have talent, we have a lot of talent here at SJPD. The problem is our diverse talent hits a ceiling, and they have never gone beyond that. You know, we had Eddie, but when you look at the whole command staff, it should reflect our, our police department from the top down should reflect our city at every point in leadership, and we have had amazing, amazing officers and leaders in our police department leave our city, or see other people get promoted above them while, while they've been sitting in that position, and, and feel like there isn't a future here for them, and that means that we lose that connection to our community. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's a, a lot of good questions that the city manager already had, and my colleagues have some really good questions that they're adding, and Councilmember Sparza, you actually are on point. If, if you look at my questions that I asked, it was actually around what have you done, so I think, I think you're really on point with, with that observation. One of the requests I want to make from my colleagues is there are a lot of questions that have very similar themes, and I'd like the, the city manager to at least have the flexibility to either combine some of the questions or group them together in, in those themes, so that we don't have multiple questions where the, the candidates or applicants will basically give us a slightly different version of a similar question. So if I can, I don't know if that's, needs to be a friendly amendment, or, or just, if I can get some, see some heads nodding, but I'd like to give the city manager that kind of flexibility. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, so I want to give everyone a chance to, anyone a chance to respond, okay. Councilmember Arenas?
Is, is that, Mayor, is that a friendly amendment or no?
That's why-
Somebody answered his question.
So I, I'll make a friendly amendment to-
Okay.
To give the city manager the flexibility to either consolidate or group like or similar questions together.
All right, and Councilmember Parlois?
So I, I'm, I'm not totally against it, but I, I would be concerned that we're gonna, you know, the interpretation of the city manager may be different than the make, the maker of the question, so if the city manager can touch base with whoever it was that proposed the question and let them know sort of what their intent is to combine before they do so, then, then I'm fine with that friendly amendment.
Okay. Councilmember Arenas?
Thank you. I'm not, my, my comments kind of already been made by, by those that have spoken, so I'm gonna keep it short. Thank you, Councilmember Morales, for including my memo that, that includes some of my questions, and you know, my questions were really around race and equity, and so I agree with, with Vice Mayor in that I think there's some group, natural groupings, and actually, I wanted to spend some time cross-referencing some of our questions, because I think some of them are, 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 might be interpreted the same, but they're slightly different. I think you had something about being an agent of change, Vice Mayor, and we also, you know, I also submitted something that had about how to, how to create change internally, so I think there are some natural groupings there, but you know, hopefully the, the questions can, can elicit really what we want and, and at the heart of, of our questions, and I think our, our city manager does a really good job of understanding where we're coming from. So the, the only thing that I wanted to just, we, just, you know, underline is some of that Councilmember Sparza said, and that is that we actually have the talent here in our own backyard, and I appreciate that we did this national search, but- but the truth is that San Jose Police Department has a lot of talented officers that are doing a really great job in keeping us safe with the amount of officers per, you know, the amount of population, the ratio of population. And, and I think that, that there is an issue in terms of how we continue to invest for those police officers that want to grow in rank. What is the path forward for them? How do we lead them to, 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 to be deputy chiefs or to be a captain or sergeant? And, and, and I think that that kind of culture, or if there's a culture that we need to examine it and really have a difficult conversation. Sometimes we just need to have those difficult conversations, put it really out there. And so I, I just want to remind our city manager and those folks who are part of the interviewing process is that we have to take a look at somebody who's willing to break the norms and who's really, who's going to be face forward, who's going to look at these issues in the eye and say, no more. And who's going to breathe life into the mission statement that we have here. And, and I'm thankful that we're going to include racial equity as part of that. And so, you know, those are the elements that I'm looking for. I think we have those elements, those attributes in the folks that are in the running now. And we have to be careful about who we choose so that we not only break some of the norms that create walls for some of our officers that are of color, that can't get to the next rank and actually have to leave our office. And all that investment in, in those officers or those high-ranking level officers goes to another city. All of that goes to another city. And so we really need to figure out a path for those officers who are here now so that we can hold on to them. Those are my comments. I, I just want to, once again, thank you, Councilwoman Paralas, for including my memo.
Right, I think that covers all the questions and comments. Let's vote on.
No, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor. I have my, I think I had my hand up, but I may not have.
Forgive me. I didn't see it. Forgive me, Councilman.
No problem. And I think what, what we're going to do is probably have to make another amendment just to add my questions because I, like Councilman Paralas, wasn't able to submit a memo. So I just want to read off my, my three questions, if that's okay? And we can send them off to staff just to confirm the language after the fact that that's okay. So, so my three questions, one is obviously we know that the Black Lives Matters movement is a consequential movement that just recently took hold in, in the United States and certainly in our city. And so one of the, one of the questions I had is what does the Black Lives Matter movement mean to you? I think that's an important thing to explore. And the other question is, you know, and I'm just going to read the language directly, I guess, but, but it can be framed in different ways. But in San Jose, there was major controversy over how our police department and city responded to the George Floyd demonstrations in 2020. Would you have addressed the protest differently? That was the second question. The very last question, I think it's an equally important question, is do you believe that local law enforcement should be collaborating with federal agencies such as Immigration and Customs Enforcement? And that's it. And then we can send that to, so, so I'd ask for a friendly amendment, but we can also send this to staff so they have the language, assuming they get it adopted.
Okay.
That's accepted in the motion.
Okay. Councilwoman Amanes, could I probe a little bit on that last one? Because we already have a policy that says we don't, we don't commu, we don't collaborate with ICE in any way on, on immigration enforcement. Do you, do you also, I assume you, you're, you also are concerned about other federal agencies? Is that right or is it, is it just ICE?
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 the question as it reads is just collaborating with federal agencies such as ICE. But yeah, just generally, I guess, we can broaden it a little broader, make it.
Okay, because I know ICE will certainly elicit one response and other agencies may get a different one.
Right. Yeah, it can be an open-ended question as to federal agencies generally, that's okay.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, let's vote then.
Amanes?
Yes.
Paralas?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Item 3.6 is an amendment to the City of San Jose's 2021 legislative program. I don't know that everyone's on the legislative affairs team is aware, but there's an additional item that we're working up through the US Mayor's Conference and several key legislators around potential inclusion of funding in a relief bill that would include dollars for a jobs program for young adults from low-income neighborhoods and various other measures to identify need, addition to income. And that may be getting some traction, it looks like, with the conference and with a couple of folks on the Senate side. And so I wanted to ask whoever makes the motion, they might make, include as an amendment, inclusion of a jobs program for low-income young adults related to resiliency in particular. That is pandemic relief, climate change, and other programs. Okay, Councilwoman Asparza?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question, actually. I, I have some comments on this item later, but I had a quick question on this, which was, would that be subject to an RFP?
Yeah, what is being currently discussed is a pilot program that would, we would, we would be, in order to get the funding, it's, it would be a competitive program, so we'd have to be able to win the federal money. And then we could use federal money as a local match. And then we could either administer it, but more likely we would be administering through a network of nonprofits, much as we're doing, for example, with the Climate Corps program with the governor. We're relying on folks like our city forest to, to be able to take on the, in that case, AmeriCorps fellows who then manage the program.
And will we be including a network such as Conservation Corps and get, have a sort of a, an open process for our nonprofit partners to apply?
Yeah, I mean, that's up to the council. I, I agree that would be appropriate. But the point is to get money in the, in the federal bill that'll enable us to do it.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. I know it's early and it would eventually come to us, but I wanted to make that desire clear. Okay. And, and then I'm assuming staff is going to make a presentation, so I'll raise my hand later, or?
I, I didn't see a presentation.
Oh, okay.
This is just an amendment. Lee, did you want to make a presentation?
Yeah, we, we actually don't have any slides. I just wanted to, to update the council. This is staff coming back just to amend our legislative guiding principles for the year based off of Councilmember Jimenez, Jimenez's memo from December 4th and last week's conversation from January 12th. Again, the language in the legislative guiding document that we've put in is fairly broad. The tactics and what we're deciding to advocate for, depending on the situation we're in, we'll go ahead and change and we will update the council and be enlisting you on those tactics. You know, just as of a few days, within the last few days anyway. And, and we've all heard in the news and we updated you that our greatest challenge right now is vaccine supplies. So Councilmember Carrasco, along with Supervisor Chavez, have sent in letters to the governor. The mayor on behalf of the city sent letters to the Senate and Assembly Budget Chairs in the early budget process, also asking for additional funding and access to the vaccine. And so this is our advocate, advocacy priority right now is access to the vaccine. But as written in the document, as we get additional access to the vaccine, we are going to be advocating for funding around communications, on-ground transportation, and a host of other things to ensure that those that need to be vaccinated and those that are, you know, feeling the adverse effects, the hardest for COVID-19, are first in line for that program. So the document is meant to be flexible and nimble for us to adjust our tactics, given the situation we're in with all of the changing kind of performance measures and updates from the federal and state government within the last few days. So with that, both Alexandria and I are available for any questions the council might have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Asparza?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I wanted to thank you, Lee, and, and the folks on your team for really listening and responding to the needs of the community. And I know Councilmember, Councilmembers Carrasco, Arenas, and myself talked a lot about what's going on right now in the East Side in particular. And so I just wanted to thank you. I think this is really important work at a very critical time in this response. And so I, I went through the memo and, and really appreciate that COVID vaccine access outreach and prioritization statement in particular. And for, for people that might be watching or listening, the, there are five ZIP codes in East San Jose account for nearly 30% of Santa Clara County's total COVID cases. What's not in the report is the City of San Jose represents 2/3 of Santa Clara County's COVID cases. So we're, we're about half the county, but we're about 2/3 of all of the COVID cases in Santa Clara County. And so there's certainly a lot of need throughout the city. And I wanted to also point out that, two things. I, I wanted to really highlight the statement to expand the community resource navigators to target services in heavily impacted areas to connect vulnerable residents to social and economic resources beyond vaccines. And I, I've said before that 2021, you know, it's, we're going to focus on saving lives and preserving health and safety, but really this year is the year for economic recovery. And we really need to, one of the things that we've learned in, in our grant outreach is how much help, how much help people really need in just accessing that, accessing those resources, filling out the state application, right? Filling out the federal application. And, and getting that help in your own language has made a huge difference for the residents of our city. And I know that this is the Intergovernmental Relations Team, but we have a lot of folks in our Economic Development Team that have done a lot of work and a lot of learning around this. So I think that's really important. The other thing that I wanted to mention as it relates to economic recovery is that, I, I think I posted it as well, but UCSF just came out with a study that talked about how unsurprisingly essential workers are getting COVID at higher rates than folks that are able to work at home. And, you know, that's for a couple of reasons. One is they're out there working and interacting with people and keeping things going and cooking food and delivering food and driving buses and all the things that the rest of us depend on. But as hourly workers, they are also typically living in more crowded living conditions. And so that's why I think this, this statement and, and the city's advocacy on vaccines is so, so critical, not just to saving lives, but also in our economic recovery as well. And lastly, I know it, it's one of the things that's in the news, but I wanted to, or actually, you know what, I'll save it for another item. So I'll just leave it at that and just say thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go to, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Arenas? Councilwoman Arenas? Your hands down now? Okay, we'll go to the public and come back, Councilwoman Arenas. She may be having a problem with her device. Mr. Soto?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Paul Soto from Horseshoe. I really never thought I would say this, but I actually agree with you, Mayor Licardo. I, I agree with your position on the program of financing the youngsters, young adults. I participated in the speedy program way back in the 80s, way late 70s, early 80s. I participated in the speedy program. But what I would like to see, and that was beneficial, you know, I mean, 50% of the check went to my mother and 50% went to my school clothes and I was able to be self-sufficient. And, you know, moms, you know, got her cut. But what I would like to see is a collaboration between that program and the suggestions that Councilwoman Arenas gave earlier on in the day. I think her ideas were, just her statement and the way that she examined how the pathway that the city has at least some responsibility that if we're going to be creating these programs that allow kids to participate in, in high-tech companies and for internships, that there be a clear pathway that they're able to see it and that they're able to walk towards it with regard to actually seeing themselves viably employed within these tech industries. You know, historically, we've been marginalized out of these types of, this type of employment. That's what the Chicano Moratorium was about. That was one of the critical pieces of the Chicano Moratorium, that we were tired of being relegated and we were tired of being marginalized into vocational areas, into vocational jobs, you know? And so I think it would be a really good collaboration between you and Councilwoman Arenas with respect to the COVID money and the young adult employment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, coming back to council, any further comments from the council? Councilwoman Asparza, did you make a motion?
I moved to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Arenas?
Thank you, I just got kicked off. As soon as you called me, I got kicked out. Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to, uh, sorry, I'm trying to look at my, trying to settle myself after stressing out and getting back on. One of the things I wanted to say was that I, I, one of the, children and families are, are being impacted. Obviously, I speak from a very personal level and I know many of you have children at home that, that you're supporting from distance learning. And I know that our, our president has proposed some children and family initiatives as part of the COVID response. And so I'm hoping that I could hear from either Lee or Alexandra about, you know, your thoughts on that. And I know that we have already family-friendly existing priorities that, that you're already supporting, but, you know, how, how will you bring those forward? Thoughts about that?
I'll, I'll start and, and throw it over to Alex for any more detail. But I, I would say, I think we can update as part of the childcare update next week in, in front of council. I think we could go over particulars, but I, the, the letter that I referenced that the city sent in to the Senate and Assembly Budget Chairs yesterday covered a variety of topics. And, and if you haven't heard, the governor is trying to expedite and do an early budget process for, for a variety of things. And we really advocated for four things in that letter, which is around homelessness, after-school programs and additional education opportunities for kids and for schools, the vaccine distribution, and then support for small businesses that have been most impacted by the shutdown. So as the budget process takes shape, we can report out on what the Senate and Assembly are doing around those matters, Councilmember?
Perfect, I appreciate that. Next on, on items I wanted to talk about is, I think it was last week, it feels like, like a month ago. But last week, I think it was on, anyways, sometime last week, I, I joined a group of some of you, who I think, Councilmember Foley, you were there. And this was a group of Latino. And this was a group of Latino community leaders and advocates who'd come together for some time to compile some, a report, and it was based on community feedback and the direction that our community is looking for in terms of prevention and care and recovery. And so, you know, as you talk about taking into consideration some of the hardest-hit populations, I think that, and I sent this to you already, Lee, I believe, the report. If I have it, please remind me. But, you know, they brought up some really good points about some of the, some of the gaps in services. And there was somebody who had shared their experience going through cancer treatments and then also then contracting, also contracting COVID and how she slept in her car because she just fell through the cracks in terms of being able to isolate. Anyways, I, there's a lot of lessons learned there that might not come to the forefront in our regular conversations. And so I would just ask you to please look through that report, look at some of these, some of this information that our grassroots organizations are gathering and that reflect the, you know, as true needs, as true as can get, because I believe that, you know, their grassroots and really working hand in hand with our community get their feedback on this. So that's one of the suggestions I have so that you can integrate what they've asked, what they've asked us to consider.
Great. And I, just for clarity, Ben is reminding me, we are doing an update on the the Biden 1.9 trillion dollar stimulus bill next week. And then part of that is 25 billion for childcare providers and additional 15 billion for block grants. So we'll go over all the details next week as part of 3.1 of what's in that 1.9 trillion dollar package and how Congress is thinking of kind of dispersing up those negotiations.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you so much. I know that there's also, I know that Sarita from Aki was also reaching out to my office for contacts to the Asian community in my district. So I know that, you know, we haven't spoken much about East Asian community. No, we've brought up the Vietnamese community, but I think that that's another group that we also need to keep an eye on. Thanks, Lee. Thanks for the feedback, for the follow-up. Thanks.
All right, Councilor Crossco?
I, actually, I just had one question, Lee, in the, in the, in your statement regarding, I'm sorry, I'm trying to open up my document. Regarding the vaccine access outreach and prioritization advocacy, is there a reason why we didn't mention our partnerships with the private industries, the private partners? You know, what was alarming to me that I, what I learned over the weekend in the meeting with the, with Dr.
Esther Shet.
No matter how much I try to pronounce his name, Dr. Marty. You know, and, and Dr. Smith, it was alarming to learn that Kaiser ensures forty percent of all Californians throughout the entire state of California. I mean, I, I think we need to let that sink in, forty percent of all Californians. And the state of California has only allocated 32,000 doses to Kaiser. So just do the math. So if they insure forty percent and they've only allocated 32,000 doses, they're, you know, Raul is really good at doing math, so he doesn't even need a pencil and paper, I'm sure, to do the math. That's just a drop in the bucket of what they need to, to vaccinate their members, which means that their members end up, will end up having to, to use other systems to get vaccinated. And that means that, that it will begin to put a burden on other systems like the public healthcare system, which should not be burdened and should be used only for those who are not insured or who totally rely on the public healthcare system. And so could this be the document that we use to guide us in furthering and strengthening our relationship with our private entities, those private partnerships, given that we use Kaiser as a, as a, as a major partner to ensure our own, our own staff, city employees, our own staffers?
It's a good question, council member. And I, yeah, that stat stuck out to me as well over the weekend on that call. You know, I think the legislative guiding principles, I would say, it doesn't need to be all encompassing because it is, it's a values-based document and advocacy document, you know, typically focused on the federal and state government. So I think when we're advocating for access to the vaccine, it's not specifically for just our county getting those doses, or like the county of Santa Clara. It is Kaiser or Stanford or the other providers in the area receiving those vaccines. So I think we're still advocating for those partners to get access to the vaccine because those are the numbers we would need. I think next week, as part of 3.1, the IGR team has been helping the vaccine team or the vaccination team and how we're going to go about this. And we're really kind of thinking of three levels, you know. You know, Alex has been leading a team, has been working with the counties and our governmental relations team to make sure we're aligned. Because at the federal level, we're really going to be focusing on advocacy and funding needs. At the state level, it's going to be the very same thing. It's going to be advocacy and funding needs. And then at a more local level, with the county being the kind of public health official, it's going to be what advocacy help do they need? And then where are, where are those gaps? Are the partners not performing well and we need to step in and help? Do we need to step in and ensure some of the clinics or some of our own sites become vaccination sites? So I think that conversation, as we start to get more access to doses of vaccinations, will evolve. But I think as part of the legislative guiding document, I think the values-based statement of we just need access, it's not specific to just the county, it is all of our partners as well.
Oh, okay. So that's fine. Then, then I'm going to leave, I just, I want to leave that little thorn for all of us to, to keep it right on our side or sit on it and have it really fester because it's going to have a domino effect on everything that we do. If, 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 if a partner, and I'm going to continue to call them partners, but if a partner like Kaiser ensures forty percent of Californians, Californians, doesn't get their dose, and we don't put that kind of pressure on, on, on the governor's administration to figure out their numbers. And I don't think it takes a mathematician like, like Councilmember Peralis to figure out those numbers. I mean, I think they're really simple to figure out, that they're not, they're not, they're not doing, somebody really messed up and didn't, didn't allocate what they were supposed to allocate. But then what that means is that those of all of you who are figuring out those sites on how to expand these distribution sites for our nonprofits, for our community care clinics, for the county, et cetera, et cetera, then that just means we're doing double time because there is such a gap of, of doses that are missing, whether it's regional Kaiser, and really what sticks out to me is Kaiser, 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 Kaiser. And I don't think it's Kaiser that doesn't want to do it. Kaiser just doesn't have the allocation that is, is supposed to be coming to them. And again, because Kaiser is, is one of our partners, we use them, they're ensuring our, our city staff. It just, it's going to have a major domino effect. And again, when, when we keep saying we're all in this together, boy, we're, we're integrated in just so many ways. This just shows you yet another, another tentacle that goes, that stretches out far and wide and deep that suddenly impacts every single, every single one of us. And if you're a Kaiser member, guess what? You may not get, when it's your turn, you may not get, you may not get an appointment, not because it's not your turn, but because they don't have doses, they don't have the allocation. And then you're going to be looking for it somewhere else. I'm just very concerned about this. And it's, and we just really, I just want that thorn to be stuck in everybody's side right now and make sure that, that we get our partners the allocations that they need as well as the public healthcare system. So, okay, so we'll leave it at that and we'll, we won't include it in this statement, but I think we'll have to include it somewhere and memorialize that, that pressure somewhere. We got to find that pressure point and as a city, be able to, to put it out there.
Thank you. And I just received notice, Lee, that the legislation I was referring to or the program that might be potentially included in a relief bill, it's already identified as a potential priority in our legislative program. Is that right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, any other questions? Okay, let's move forward then to vote on Councilmember Sparsa's motion.
Menas? Menas? Peralis?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Venus?
Aye.
Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Liccardo?
Aye. And the other two, Menas?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, we're now on to item 5.1, which is the awarded construction contract for the Monterey Road resurfacing project. There is no report, I believe. Is there, John?
There is not.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
We'll take public comment on this resurfacing project. I see no public comment, so we'll come back to the council. Thank you for paving our roads, you and your team, John. Councilman Cohen?
Just a quick question for you. I apologize, I wasn't able to get this answered ahead of time. This is the awarding of a construction contract that I see a line item, and I know this will probably be on all of these contracts in the future, and so I won't have to ask it again. The line item on the cost semi-programmatic project delivery estimate, that, can you just explain what goes into that number?
Yeah, that's the staff cost to repair the project, both for the bid and for assessments prior to us putting the bid specifications together. We actually go out to the, to the site and actually do the assessment. And then it's also the cost for inspection as well, when the contract is awarded. So it's Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll move to approve. Oh, I started getting moved in second, sorry.
Yes, but we'll take yours as a third. Okay, let's vote.
Menas?
Yes.
Peralis?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Venus?
Aye.
Ms. Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Liccardo?
Aye. All right, item 6.1 is the amendment to the Master Consultant Agreement with Candy Janks Consultants for Engineering Services on the filter rehabilitation project at the regional wastewater facility. There's no presentation on this item. We'll go first to public comment, see if there's any public comment on this Master Consultant Agreement. I see no hands. So we're going to go back to council. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Somebody got that motion. I'm sure Tony figured that out. We'll vote on that motion.
Menas?
Yes.
Peralis?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye. Aye.
Ms. Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Cardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, so filter rehabilitation, didn't get your blood boiling. We have the cogeneration facility. This is the construction contingency increase on the Cogen facility project at the wastewater facility. We are going to go first to public comment to see if there are any public comments on this item, the construction contingency increase for Cogen facility at the wastewater, the regional wastewater facility. There is nobody raising their hand, so we're going to come back to council. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Let's vote.
Menas?
Yes.
Peralis?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Aye.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8.2, the objections to the 2122 hazardous vegetation commencement report directing the removal of reeds, weeds, or refuse. Let's go first to the public, see if there are any comments from members of the public on this item 8.2, overruling objections to the hazardous vegetation commencement report. I see no hands, so we're going to go back to the council. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Comments? Let's vote.
Menas?
Yes.
Peralis?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Aye. All right, 8.3 is the adoption of the 2021 COVID residential eviction moratorium pretends financially impacted by COVID-19. There is a presentation.
Yes, there is.
Welcome, Jackie.
Thank you. Rachel is going to be sharing the screen.
Just give me a moment. You can go ahead and get started.
Great. Good afternoon, not afternoon now, Mayor and council members. My name is Jackie Morales Ferrand. I am the Director of the Housing Department. I also have Rachel Vanderveen, who's the Deputy Director, in addition to Deputy City Attorney Chris Alexander. Last September, the state passed AB 3088 that limited evictions through January 31, 2021, so long as tenants were able to pay twenty-five percent of their rent through this time period. On February 1, without additional state or federal action, tenants will be required to pay the full amount of monthly rent due or potentially face eviction. While state action isn't anticipated, the proposed recommendation and adoption of an urgency ordinance is intended to continue protections against eviction for effective tenants in case state action is delayed beyond January 31. Without immediate legislative action, housing instability and the potential for homelessness will increase in the months to come as tenants bounce paying full months rents, begin repaying past due rent accrued, as well as other living expenses. Slide number two. The following summarizes current and proposed federal, state, and local eviction moratoriums. The federal CDC eviction moratorium temporarily halted evictions for non-payment of rent through September 4, between September 4, 2020, through January 31, 2021. President Biden directed federal agencies to extend their eviction moratoriums through at least March 31. So far, HUD has extended their moratorium on evictions and foreclosures on Fair Housing Act insured mortgages. The CDC is also expected to extend their eviction moratorium through March 31. So if it's in red, it is proposed. Additionally, there is pending action for Congress to act on a 1.9 Additionally, there is pending action for Congress to act on a one point nine trillion COVID nineteen relief plan proposed by President Biden that includes an extension of the eviction and foreclosure moratoria through September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. However, no firm date for a vote has been announced. On the state level, AB thirty eighty eight protected tenants affected by COVID nineteen against eviction from August thirty first through January thirty first, twenty twenty one, if tenants were unable to pay rent due to a COVID nineteen related hardship. On January twenty fifth, Governor Newsom announced a likely extension until June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, under SB ninety one that is currently progressing through the state legislature. In fact, today they took two actions and it is moving along. And the county took action today and did pass their local eviction moratorium. So that one actually is no longer proposed. They took action uh, early this evening. Next slide. As I said, Governor Newsom Newsom announced an agreement reached with legislators for them to pass an extension of the protections under AB thirty eighty eight through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. California lawmakers could vote on SB ninety one as soon as Thursday. Tenants again who pay twenty five percent of monthly rent receive eviction protections. The twenty five percent can be paid monthly or a lump sum payment by June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. The state is also moving forward as quickly as possible to deploy California's share of the latest federal stimulus bill. The state rental assistance program prioritizes households that earn below fifty percent of the AMI and communities who are disproportionately impacted by COVID nineteen. Proposed eligible eligible uses include paying up to eighty percent of unpaid rent and utilities. The EOC recovery branch has a goal to provide the city's overall approach on our February ninth agenda. More information will be provided at that time on the rental assistance program and how it will be implemented in San Jose. Next slide. Since state law is still pending, staff is proposing enacting a temporary moratorium on no cause evictions and evictions due to nonpayment of rent for residential tenants and mobile homeowners who have been financially impacted by COVID nineteen. In addition, they would include a one year repayment period for any ret rent debt accrued during the moratorium. This would be effective February first through the period of this local state of emergency or if earlier, the effective date of any new state legislation providing eviction protections. So if the state passes their protections, then our ordinance would be preempted. So the council can pass these protections under an urgency ordinance to protect the health and safety of San Jose residents at greatest risk of losing their housing while the local state of emergency is in effect. A companion ordinance is also included in the recommendation in order to cover the repayment period of unpaid rent after the eviction moratorium ends. Next slide. If approved, the urgency ordinance would be effective on February first, while the companion ordinance would go to a second reading on February ninth. However, again, if the state passes a legislation addressing COVID nineteen rent debt going forward, then the city's ordinance will effectively terminate because the state's protections will apply to local moratorium as well as to cities without moratoriums. And so that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Jackie. Uh, so we recognize what we're doing here is really a prophylactic measure in case the state does not come through. Um, but the good news seems to be is that we have some progress at the state with an agreement. Uh, all right, Mr. Soto? We're speaking today on the eviction moratorium on this item.
Yeah, yeah, a little console. Hold up.
You wanna turn off that other device?
All right, cool. What I wanted to talk about is the um, the possibility of an extension of one year on the moratorium, and we visit the issue in June. Because we, the people need some breathing room. We're going to have this pandemic issue is not going to go away anytime soon. I personally project at least five years before we even start looking at something that resembles economic recovery. Then you have the psychological recovery and the social recovery. So there's three components to this. There's the psychological, the economic, and the social. And so with that said, we need some breathing room. You know, I was homeless recently. And it was, it it just, I was homeless, I was in a couple of the shelters in a tent a couple of nights, and the challenges that I was faced with in my own city, in a city that I literally advocate for and I give my life, literally dedicate my life to, to be in that kind of economic position was just, it was mind boggling. It was very confusing to me. You know, this is the soil that my ancestors toiled, and they didn't deal with all of those conditions, you know, in the history of the city, just so that I could be living under those kinds of conditions because poverty is created. Let's let's not mince here, poverty is being created right now. Okay, it's being generated by the gentrification by these, this is the most expensive real estate in the world. Okay, so what I'm asking for, I'm imp- imploring you to have a one year moratorium with a six month revisit to just examine where things are at that time, but you do it for one year, you're signaling to the people, we understand, we care, and we're gonna do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anil Babar? Neil, we're not able to hear you right now. Uh, maybe your device? And Neil, we're still not able to hear you if you're trying to talk right now. And Neil, why don't we come back to you? Uh, appears to be an issue with the device. Uh, we'll come back to you at the end of this this next group. Uh, the person with the phone number ending four nine six three?
Yeah, hi, Martha O'Connell, uh, GSMOL. Are we allowed to speak on Councilperson Foley's memo? I'm not clear.
That's part of this item, yes.
We are. Okay, I would, I am speaking for Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League, and we are in strong support of uh, Councilperson Foley's memo. The proposal to freeze the rent, uh, in any rent increases, uh, a continuation of that freeze will have a devastating impact on mobile home residents. If you tell the park owners that they can, that they are not allowed to implement their normal rent increases, they are going to go for a petition for fair return. We've already had one park owner send out an email today saying that that is what she is going to advise her owners. This means that park residents can face huge increases beyond the normal three percent, and the city of San Jose is without legal authority to block those increases. This is really critical. If a park owner gets an increase of, let's say, sixty dollars a month, the city of San Jose is not able to block those increases. Additionally, the residents are going to have to come up with at least twenty thousand dollars to defend themselves against a petition for fair return. They must hire an attorney, they must hire expert witnesses. I can tell you that we've had two in my park, back to back. The second year, we were unable to raise the funds to hire an attorney, so I had to represent the folks in my park against a park attorney. It is, it is stressful. This case went on for over four years. The residents were waiting to find out what kind of rent increase they were gonna suffer. So please, with all due respect to Councilperson Maya Espaza, please do not, uh, do not vote on a rent freeze for mobile home residents in total, but a targeted rent increase that would be given to those who are, who have been impacted by COVID. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Matthew Reed?
Uh, good evening, Matthew Reed, Silicon Valley at home. Uh, we're here tonight to strongly support staff's recommendation to extend the city's eviction moratorium in the face of the lack of timely action in Sacramento. As an aside, not to put too fine a point on it, but our state leader leadership can and should do better than wait till the last moment to address the human cost of the uncertainty of these times, and we shouldn't shouldn't have to do this, but I appreciate your leadership. We also support the leadership of Councilmember Sparsis and asking for housing to come back with an extension of the moratorium on rent increases and are confident that the department will be able to address the concerns raised by Councilmember Foley. As you're all well aware, policies only matter when they are effectively implemented to ensure that promised rights are enjoyed and responsibilities are respected. Things, things are not well. Um, we believe many continue not to understand or respect the current rules, and and we're headed now into a a period of unfortunately additional uncertainty as we extend rules and we have cities and counties and the state and the federal government again trying to figure out how to protect people. This leads to a tremendous amount of uncertainty um, and and destabilizes the system and it hurts people. Um, as you know, this is also not getting simpler. While it feels like the pieces are falling in place, the implementation challenges ahead are are overwhelming. Um, I know you do this every week. Today, the Water Resources Board released a report estimating a billion dollars, one billion dollars in unpaid water debt in California. We know this body understands the challenges and we stand ready to support the efforts to be prepared for these challenges ahead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Ryan Jazinski?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Uh, my name is Ryan Jazinski, and I represent the Mobile Home Park Owners on the Housing and Community Development Commission, although I'm not speaking uh, in the status of HCDC tonight. I want to thank Martha O'Connell for working with me throughout the weekend. I also want to thank Councilmember Foley for her time and for submitting the memo as well. We came together this weekend in a collaborative collaborative effort to protect those that are most vulnerable. Our intention is to take a more targeted approach, offering support in the way of a rent increase freeze for those that have demonstrated they have been financially impacted by COVID nineteen. We conducted outreach to our constituents and received positive feedback and support for our proposal for both owners and residents. I also want to take a moment to address the way we coordinated these discussions. We received notification of agenda item eight point three on Friday at four thirty PM, necessitating work through the weekend to conduct outreach and prepare for this meeting. Then we received another invite from Housing Department on Monday at eight thirty PM for an impromptu meeting with homeowners, uh, mobile homeowners and residents for a meeting the next day, today, at four PM, which conflicted with the city council meeting. On a bright note, there was unanimous support for the Foley memo. I want to highlight that this short notice makes it difficult for us to do the background work that is necessary to have meaningful conversation regarding these topics. This challenge impacts all parties involved, as everyone has other responsibilities, both personally and professionally. In the future, it would be beneficial for everyone to have more advance notice, to work independently, then collaboratively, to find reasonable solutions for agenda items of this nature. Again, we are hopeful the uh, the Foley proposal uh, that was presented will be adopted, as there's been support from the public in the meeting today and through letters submitted in the public comment tonight. We believe this proposal continues to meet the objective of supporting the most in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Doug Johnson?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is Doug Johnson with the Western Manufactured Housing Communities Association. WMA represents the owners and operators of mobile home parks throughout California. We respectfully oppose another citywide ban on all space rent increases in San Jose's mobile home communities. Instead, we support the targeted rental assistance approach offered in Councilmember Pam Foley's January twenty fifth council memorandum. Identifying those mobile home park residents truly in need and providing them direct assistance is the fairest and most efficacious way to help them during this unprecedented health and economic crisis. Park owners want to continue to do everything they can to help keep their residents safe and in their homes. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Tim Bobian?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Liccardo and council members. Tim Bobian, representing the Santa Clara County Association of Realtors and our six thousand members. SCORE supports the memorandum authored by Councilmember Foley on this issue. We understand the need and reasoning to extend eviction moratoriums as the COVID pandemic continues and worsens. We do not wish to see anybody pushed into homelessness during this public health crisis and understands the importance of maintaining a safe shelter during these times. SCORE thanks city staff for clarifying that this moratorium only serves as a stopgap until final state legislation is passed and will supersede this urgency ordinance. We wish to limit the confusion and unnecessary administrative burdens of competing ordinances that makes it difficult for tenants and housing providers alike to understand and comply with. SCORE urges the city to continue to advocate the state and federal government for further rental assistance as unpaid back rent rapidly increases. Debts are growing to amounts that tenants will be unable to pay, leaving housing providers struggling to pay mortgage utilities, maintenance repairs, and their daily living expenses. As mortgage forbearance may near an end, balloon back payments could near a foreclosure cliff. This would result in countless unintended evictions of vulnerable tenants and the depletion of much needed naturally affordable housing in the city of San Jose. It is also crucial as rental assistance is made available from the recent federal funding that housing providers are allowed to apply for these funds themselves to streamline the process and limit the burden on tenants to receive this assistance quickly. Previous procedural hurdles made it difficult for tenants and housing providers truly in need of these funds to absolve unpaid rent burdens and acquire the necessary assistance. Once again, SCORE encourages council to improve, approve Councilmember Foley's memo and consider these recommendations to further assist our city's vulnerable tenants and housing providers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Glenna? Glenna, appears that your device is still muted. If you could unmute your device?
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can, thank you.
Great, thank you. Glenna Howcroft, GSMOL, Super Chapter President. Mayor Liccardo and council members, please support the Jazinski O'Connell proposal on item eight point three. Otherwise, one, the park owners will unleash a deluge of petitions for fair return. Two, we, the mobile home residents, will have to hire an attorney and expert witnesses costing anywhere from twenty five to thirty thousand dollars. Three, these cases can be appealed to Superior Court, and they can drag on for years. Four, the increases granted by a hearing officer can be much larger than the annual raise allowed by the city. Plus, that raise would be in addition to the annual raise. This would decimate the mobile home community. That is why I call upon Mayor Liccardo and the city council to accept the Jazinski O'Connell compromise. It's the only right and sensible thing to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Roberta Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Liccardo. I'm Roberta Moore, a twenty nine year resident of San Jose and a fourplex owner. Please support Pam Foley's memo for mobile homes and adopt it for apartments. This memo is based on a collaboration between owners and renters to identify what is best for all of the people affected. Thank you, Ryan Jazinski and Martha O'Connell, for your tireless efforts and working hard to come together. Thank you, Councilmember Foley for supporting this collaboration. This proposal is designed to be fair and equitable for all parties while still protecting the vulnerable people. The majority of owners, including me, want to do what's right and help people. We don't want people on the streets. This is the best way to help people who are most in need without causing unnecessary burden on housing providers. My request is council adopts this proposal for apartments as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Grego Hagan?
Thank you, Mayor Liccardo and council members. Um, my name is Grego Hagan, and I represent owners of two mobile home parks in the city of San Jose. Um, I am in support of Councilmember Foley's memorandum. I am in support of Councilmember Foley's memorandum. I also want to thank Ryan and Martha. For really bringing the troops on both sides representing the. Mobile homeowners and also the park owners. And I attended the meeting today to discuss this and there was unanimous support. For both, from both the homeowners and the park owners. In support of Councilmember Foley's memorandum. We believe in helping those residents in need. Just a little stats from my side of our parks is. We are 99 and a half percent collected. We have worked with multiple residents. We entered into payment plan agreements. And we are here to help those who need in this. The memorandum that's been proposed does that. And so I asked the council. What are we trying to solve for? I believe we're trying to solve for those who need help. And so I think we need to look closely. And be sure we support Councilmember Foley's memorandum because that's what that does as opposed to. You know, looking at the proposed other memorandum, which I believe has some other unintended consequences which residents have brought up as concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Right back to the council. Councilmember Sparza.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to give. Talk about this topic for a little bit and then to give some context and then talk a little bit about how we got here and what is happening tonight. So first, I. On the moratorium, I wanted to thank staff for bringing this item back to us. It's clear that our residents of San Jose. Are continuing to face the worst of this crisis and this pandemic, including the risk of heading over the eviction cliff. And again, this is an example of, as the mayor indicated. Hopefully the state will do the right thing and we won't be needed. But again, our city is standing ready to be that last line of defense. I wanted to point a couple of statistics out statewide. There are 1.1 million renters. Who owe a total of $3.6 billion. And nearly a third of all low-income renters are behind on rent. This debt is hanging over them. And a recent study found that 49% of tenants have borrowed money from friends or family to make rent. 29% have taken on credit card debt. 26% have been selling assets to raise rent money. San Jose mirrors the state's. Renters and that we are a city 45% renter. As is California. That's nearly half of our residents are renters. And so I wanted to thank the moratorium. I think extending that is critical. I, you know, I think we've all heard from residents. I've had. Moms, you know, call or come up to me out in the community tearful because. This is weighing on them every single day. You know, they're trying to pay what they can, selling whatever they can. To make some money, but it's. This is crushing debt for folks in our community. It is not making it go away. It's just postponing some of these problems and I'm. I'm looking forward to the state to see what the state has to say. And before I actually get to that, I want to, I want to talk about the state and just give my two cents on what's happening with the state. Is we, like San Francisco and LA are fortunate enough to have. A very robust network of 70 equity providers out in our community providing rental assistance. And so while we're talking about all the renter protections, I just wanted to put that out there. That as these discussions take place, I know the mayor is very active in the big city mayors. Advocating for San Jose. I know our housing department talks to a lot of their counterparts at the state level. My hope is that we can continue this robust network because I think it's been acknowledged by a lot of folks. Throughout the state that. It may be very, very difficult for people to access that help. And so we will, we would leave. Huge parts of our community out of that assistance. So I wanted to put that out there. I also wanted to, so I wanted to get back to tonight. So. We allowed the rent increase moratorium to expire, right? And I take some responsibility for that because I talked, when we talked about sick leave in December. I actually brought up that I have residents who have received rent increase notices in December. That has continued. And I think that's also something that a lot of folks may not understand is not everybody, most, you know, most people play by the rules, thankfully. You heard from people tonight who play by the rules. Not everybody plays by the rules. Throughout this entire pandemic. I have heard from folks who have gotten eviction notices during the pandemic. And eviction notices for not paying rent. When they couldn't pay rent and there are supposed to be protections. So we allowed this to expire. And. I have received so many calls from District 7 residents, and I know it's not just District 7. So many calls from people who are already stressed from crushing debt. And to get a rent increase notice in the, in the worst of this pandemic. Has left a lot of folks in tears. And these are. These are folks who live in apartments. Market rate, which by the way, only 30%. Of apartments in San Jose are actually owned by San Jose-based companies. Most of these landlords are not mom and pop. Some of the rent increase notices have been given by affordable housing developers. Affordable housing units. As well as market rate landlords. So it's been happening. And again, we allow this to expire. And so people are getting these notices. And they're dealing with crushing debt. So it's not nothing. It is happening out there in the community. And that's what the memo. That I submitted on Friday. Was in response to, was a response to calls from tearful residents. About this debt that they just don't think they're ever going to get out from under. And so that brings us to how we got here and what is here. So, so I understand that this is technically a separate but very closely related issue. So for folks that are listening. We're very limited in what we can say and do tonight. Because it is related, but it is not agendized. And by the way, my office was also part of these weekend conversations. To make that clear to folks that we tonight would not be making a decision on this. It is not agendized as such. And so. So I wanted to ask Jackie if you could explain sort of what here is, why it's in the memo the way it is and what could happen. As far as the freeze extension.
Sure. So I believe, you know, the Housing Department did indicate in our memo. That the rent freeze had expired and we would need direction from the council on how to proceed. And I appreciate Councilmember your. Statement that you feel like, feel some responsibility that I feel from the Housing Department, a responsibility that we did not. Clearly flag this issue to the council. So frankly, I appreciate you and your office for. Sending me an email asking me about when the, this particular moratorium expired. And so. We can't move on it now because we don't have a recommendation on our memo. But it is the city, it is the administration's intent to move forward with a memo. And bring it to rules for the council to consider.
Thank you. Thank you. And so I wanted to, so hopefully that clarifies things. I think there's, there've been a lot of, there's been a lot of misunderstanding about what is happening tonight. Tonight, we are voting on an eviction moratorium. And that's, that's the vote. And however, we can, we can ask the Housing Department to come back. And so I wanted to also thank. All of the mobile home park advocates who did work together over the weekend and today. To have those conversations, I wanted to thank Councilmember Foley. Thank you for your memo. Thank you for being part of the solution. And I wanted to, and also I know that staff, because. I know that staff will work with the stakeholders. In terms of developing a proposal for the city council's consideration on the rent freeze, but that is not what we're voting on tonight. And I believe I can't, that can't be included in the motion. Is that correct, Nora? We've simply stated. Our, our desire. But it cannot be part of the motion. Is that correct?
Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. And so, and so I would add, I'm sure Councilmember Foley will, will add to that. I wanted to. To again, thank her and thank all of the partners tonight. Again, for partnership. I think, you know, that's collaboration and partnership and communication, I think, is one of the themes that has emerged today. I do want to say that my, my desire at this point, because it's not part of, we can't make a motion, but my desire would be. To review and analyze the recommendations. By the letter submitted by Martha McConnell. Again, we can't make that part of the motion. But I'd like to thank Councilmember Foley for codifying that letter. I know that there's a lot of work. A lot of work and a lot of changes in terms of rental assistance and rent forgiveness, as we heard earlier about what's happening at the state. But I, I, I feel like there's sort of these two really important groups that we all love and all want to protect. And that's our mobile home. Homeowners and who are also tenants, right? Who rent spaces and then all of the tenants in San Jose. And who, especially at the low-income level, who are. Dealing with some really crushing, crushing economic despair right now. So, so that I just wanted to put that out there that that was, that would be my preference is for the Housing Department to review. Review the, the letter and the request that Martha, in the letter that Martha O'Connell and Ryan Jazinski, the joint letter that they submitted. So that we can start figuring out a path. I don't want to sort of commit to anything at this point because I think. I think there's a lot to consider and I just want to make sure that we take that time. To really assess what's going to work, what's going to work for everyone in our community. And so with that, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommendations regarding the adoption. Of the 2021 COVID residential eviction moratorium for tenants financially impacted by COVID. That's the motion.
Is there a second? Okay, I think I heard the vice mayor. Okay. Councilmember Foley.
Okay, I thought I was really clear on this issue, but apparently I'm not clear on this issue. So. Councilmember Asparza, you did not move your memo either. You only moved staff's recommendation.
So, so as I'm, correct, as, as, because we are not allowed to make a motion on the rent freeze.
Okay. Okay, well. Then. Could we include, well, let, before I go on what, what I'd like to see us include if it's possible. Is first a statement. We are here as a few have said, and those members of the public have said it, because the state legislature has not taken action yet. And in this 11th hour, they seem to be finally reaching an agreement. On the eviction moratorium, which does include assistance for landlords. Financial assistance, which will pay them. This is the proposal anyway. If it gets passed this way. It will benefit a lot of people that if the, the state will pay the landlord 80% of the unpaid rent. If the landlord forgives 20% of the rent. That really makes good business, business sense on my part. No one on this dais and nobody calling in today wants to see any more, dais, that's not really it. It's a Zoom call. None of us want to see any more individuals made homeless by an eviction during this pandemic. And. Lots has to happen in order to keep people in their homes. Going into the purple tier yesterday is really a good step forward economically. Because some of those workers who weren't able to earn income in the last month, who work in restaurants. And service organizations now can go back to work. And that's great. Hairdressers, et cetera, can go back to work and start earning a paycheck, which is what they want to do. Once they earn a paycheck, then they can provide food for their family, take care of their family and provide shelter for themselves. We truly do not want to increase any, put anybody out on the street due to homelessness. Due to unpaid rent or unpaid mortgages for that point. So the federal government is working on that. The state government is working on the landlord tenants, which is great. I wish we weren't here now having to make this decision. I support staff's recommendation. Truthfully, I supported my own recommendation too, but apparently I can't vote on that right now and I can't push, put it forward. But I do want to thank. Ryan, who, Ryan, who represents the mobile home park owners and Martha, who represents the mobile homeowners. Mobile homeowners and the mobile home park owners. And how they came together this weekend once again in an unprecedented way. We passed a proposal, an ordinance last year on April 28th with very similar language to this. To avoid the problems that the mobile homeowners talked about today, the increase in rent. The ensuing lawsuits that may result if we interfered with that process. And that was unprecedented. To get the mobile home park owners together with the mobile homeowners and reach an agreement like that. We accomplished that again, or they accomplished that this weekend. And I was able to author a memo. What I'd like to see, and I'm wondering if we can, so I truly appreciate all of that. I'm wondering if in the. Motion, if we can include direction to staff to come back with a recommendation on. Free rent freezes.
And I believe that is happening. Is that correct? We just can't make it as part of the motion. Is that correct, Nora?
That's correct. Steph has indicated that they'll bring it back. And so that they're going to, to, to do that and do what they need to do to get it on the agenda. But it's not been agendized for tonight.
Okay, it's coming to rules. Is that correct? Just to be really explicit that it is happening.
Yes, we are, it's our intent to bring this item to rules.
Okay, so that when it comes through for rules, please consider including. A freeze on rental, on apartments as well, not just the, the mobile home parks. We've addressed. Mobile home parks and the exception on the freeze. Can please consider an exception on the freeze for those people who are not COVID-related to rental difficulties. I know I'm saying that in kind of a weird way, but you understand what I'm trying to get, what point I'm trying to make, Jackie. Okay. With that, I just want to thank everybody for coming together on this. I appreciate the issue and I wish our, our state government had acted quicker so we didn't have to take this action. But take this action we must. Thank you.
Thank you. So Anil Babar was trying to speak during public comment and had a device problem, you guys will recall. So let's go back to Anil. Anil.
Anil, you're.
There you go. Yeah.
I'm sorry about that earlier. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Anil Babar with the California Apartment Association. I want to echo the request that. Councilmember Foley made to add an exemption for. Apartments where they're, who are not affected by COVID. I think while tenants are facing deep challenges to, from this pandemic, so too are landlords. Just as a snapshot of the rental market we've seen so far, rents over the past year dropped by 10% and that's across the board, not just one product type. We're seeing a near, a near doubling of the vacancy rate over the past year. We're currently 10.5%. And that doesn't even factor in the number of units that are occupied that aren't paying rent. So, we're having a bit of a double whammy when it comes to rental income that's lost. And that high vacancy rate is even at, isn't even at the peak. According to folks at CoStar who are forecasting that we're going to see something as high as 17% vacancy a year from now, I just want to kind of paint this picture that the market is, and the rental industry is suffering quite a bit. And, you know, tenants and landlords are in this together where, where our members are working with their tenants and trying to make sure they find ways to keep them housed, but it doesn't help when, when, you know, when they're faced, everyone's facing these financial hurdles. So, I want to thank the council for allowing me to speak despite my technical difficulties. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Soto, I know you spoke earlier, so we will call you on the next item. Okay, let's go back to Council. Councilmember Frost?
Yeah, thank you. And I think my, my colleagues have said it well. So, I'll be brief, just kind of adding to the, to the timeline there. I believe it was back in August that I had recommended to council we extend our eviction moratorium to match cities like San Francisco and Oakland aligning it with our local declared state of emergency. And certainly, I think as we see once again the state, which was the, the same situation back then, kind of late to act. I'm happy to, you know, obviously be supporting our local recommendation that we have coming out now. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I have a question for Jackie and Rachel. I heard from a housing provider who has concerns about, about some tenants. I hope it's a small number, but some tenants who may not be willing to work with them on the aid application. And I know it's, it sounds like it needs to be a joint, a joint effort between the housing provider and the tenant. And there are some reasons that they, they might not want to do that. The tenants, one of them is that they may have concern, concerns about their immigration status being revealed. Another is not wanting to divulge financial information. And the, the question I have is, what, how is the Housing Department? Or are you messaging this with tenants? And how, how are you working with the housing providers to overcome these so that they can get the back rent that they're owed through, through the aid that we're offering?
So, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle McGurk because she's going to be, the EOC is actually going to be the one overseeing the new 30 million that we'll be getting in federal aid. And that's the one that has that requirement for the landlords and tenants to work together.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is Michelle?
Councilmember Davis?
Not today.
Yeah.
No, Michelle's on the line, I thought.
Huh.
And maybe she's not.
I don't see her listed.
She.
I'll take it, I'll take it offline. That's fine.
Take it offline. And we will for sure, when we come back in early February with the recommendation on how we are going to invest the federal funds, we'll ensure that we have a response to that question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm here. Michelle.
Okay, Michelle.
Yes, Councilmember, this is something that we're working very closely with our nonprofit partners on and they can usually work very carefully with the tenants to understand how the, this aid can help them. And usually, it has not been the tenants that are the problem. It's usually the reverse. It's the landlords that have concerns. But we've, we are taking that into account, especially as we design the next phase of the program. So, I appreciate the feedback and if you would like to have any particular landlords reach out to me to share those concerns, they can.
Great. I will, I will send them your way. Thanks, Michelle.
Okay, thanks to Councilmembers Asparza and Foley for your thoughtful memorandum. I know we'll consider those in the days ahead and I will certainly support going forward. I think those are all the comments. Let's vote.
Menas?
Aye.
Peralas?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Aye.
Mayhem?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye. All right, 10.3, I'm sorry, first 10.1 is the land use consent agenda. There are two items. Anyone like to pull an item from land use consent? All right, is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on either of these land use consent items? On 10.1, I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand. So, let's come.
Second.
On the motion, let's vote.
Menas?
Aye.
Peralas?
Aye.
Cohen? Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas? Arenas?
Sorry about that. Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mayhem?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, 10.3 is a general plan amendment conforming rezoning conditional use permit and best tentative map for residential care facility located at 470 West San Carlos Street. There is a presentation. Welcome, Rosalyn.
Thank you, Mayor, Council and members of the public. Rosalyn Huey, Director of Planning, Building and Code Enforcement. And I will close up the presentation now. So, this item before the council this evening is the Delmas Senior Living Residential Care Facility. It's located at the southwest corner of West San Carlos Street and Guilford Avenue. The project consists of 116 assistant living residential care guest rooms, 49 memory care guest rooms, four residential units for staff and 32 parking spaces. And this evening, the city council will be considering the four elements of the project, including the general plan amendment, the confirming rezoning, the conditional use permit, as well as the tentative map. So, the general plan land use change, this map shows the side by side comparison. The existing land use designation is residential neighborhood and the proposed change is to downtown. For the zoning districts, the existing zoning is a combination of both light industrial and R2 to family residence. And the proposed rezoning is for DC downtown. The, a city sponsored community meeting for the project was held on October 1st of last year. And the key issues were raised by members of the community, including height, parking and how the project was interfacing with the residential neighborhood. I do want to note that the applicant also did additional community outreach engagement, including outreach during the preliminary review phase of the project. Also want to note that city staff have received emails from members of the community with additional questions, just clarifying the height considerations, setbacks, references to the 2002 SNI Delmas Park Neighborhood Improvement Plan, as well as how the project was analyzed in accordance with the 2014 Durdon Station Area Plan. The Planning Commission considered the project at its meeting on December 9th and voted that the city council certify the addendum to the downtown EIR, approve the rezoning, adopt the resolution approving the tentative map, as well as approve the conditional use permit. And I also just want to acknowledge the memorandum submitted by the mayor and council members Jimenez, I'm sorry, Councilmember Peralas, Davis, Arenas and Mayhem. And with that, staff is available to answer any questions. And Mayor, I know that the applicant team should be on the call for their presentation as well.
Great. Who'll be speaking for the applicant?
I believe that is Paul Ring.
Okay, Paul, I believe you have five minutes. You and your team.
I see Tim on the line as well.
Yes, hi, Mr. Mayor. Both Paul and I will be speaking tonight. Paul will start and I'll jump right in.
Okay, great. Hi, Paul.
Hello, thank you. Thanks for the introduction. Good evening, council members, and thank you for the care that you give San Jose's community development. I'm Paul Ring. I'm a partner at Urban Catalyst and we're a local development company composed of a team with decades of experience working and investing specifically in downtown San Jose's neighborhoods. What you have before you this evening is one of seven of our projects. This one focused on addressing the deep regional need to provide options for seniors to live in. And we're excited that this can be located amongst the rich amenities of downtown. We're grateful to be working with ADIS Architects on the design of the project. And so, on behalf of the partners, I want to thank you for your consideration for approval. And I'll turn the screen over to Urban Catalyst's Director of Development, Tim Melocean. Oh, Tim, you're on mute.
I think you're still on mute, Tim. We're not able to hear you. Apologies, I was, I had the, the screen share going. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We are very excited to be here before you tonight. Tonight, our presentation will focus primarily on the work that we have done with the community over the past year and a half. Well, also want to thank staff. They've been tremendous to work with. We also have several members of our, our team here tonight in case questions come up. Thango, our architect, and Jason Reyes of Calson Management. Calson is the operating partner that will be managing the community on behalf of Urban Catalyst. By now, you have some familiarity with the project. 165 residential care units. This is not an age restricted market rate housing development. This is a programmed and amenitized community for the elderly. A lot of amenities, living spaces, library, wellness center, cafe for residents, activity rooms. We also have a really, really nice dining room with an outdoor patio on, on the top floor where residents can, can view the downtown. We have engaged the community from the very outset. We initiated the outreach in September of 2019. And as has been stated, we had two additional meetings in 2020 and frequent and ongoing communication with the neighborhood through that time. So, I'd like to focus on, on showing ways that we have directly addressed the community's concerns that we gained from that process. The biggest thing is that when, when you look back at where we started in 2019, we've reconfigured our project and, and we reduced the height in particular. The neighborhood was concerned about the 85 foot height that we proposed for the corner or that we had conceptualized. We reduced that height and the project now complies at 65 feet with the existing Durdon Station Area Plan height limits. We also modified the architecture along Guilford Avenue. And we did that by, by giving the appearance of five stories at, at Guilford Avenue. You can see how we've set the project back there. We've articulated the architecture. You can also see on this slide how we have done that a little bit more and, and we set back the southern property 10 feet from the southern property line for the majority of that, of that edge condition. We also heard feedback from the community about the, the site plan. Most importantly, the community was concerned about commercial loading for a project of this type. So, we worked very closely with planning and public works and, and, and we moved the, the loading onto West San Carlos. So, now it's located in this area here. That'll include garbage, commercial loading. There will be emergency services for this type of a use. So, that will now be serviced from West San Carlos and will not interfere with the ongoing day to day activities of the neighborhood. We also enhanced our sidewalks and we have also made a voluntary, or we will make a voluntary contribution in order to provide an upgraded signal or enhanced crosswalk in the project vicinity along West San Carlos. I just want to add one more note. Urban Catalyst has directly engaged the community through this process and we view that experience very positively. In the early stages, there were some, some concerns expressed about this project or certain elements of the project, but we have found the community to be generally supportive of development. So, the net result has been a better project before you tonight, one that works for everyone. So, it's, it's allowed us to create a much better relationship with the community. And, and with that, we respectfully ask that council to provide its support for this project tonight and move to approve. And we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's first go to members of the community who've been patiently waiting to speak. Mr. Soto?
Yeah, this is Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. I grew up in that neighborhood. I grew up right, right there, right smack where you're putting your building. And Eric Hayden is pretty much a juggernaut in that area. He wouldn't care whether we liked it or not. He would do everything humanly possible to ensure and make sure that that happens. So, you talking about their community being, you know, fully supportive of what's going on? You haven't really talked to the community. You talk to the people, your sycophants is who you've talked to. You know, so that's number one. Number two is that there is, how much is it going to be for people to live there? How do you define senior housing? How do you, what is affordable? If you're going to use that affordable term, what is affordable? Define that. Be very, very clear and specific. Because you're, the fact that the issues that you were actually omitting, those are the ones that I'm going to have the questions for, not what you're saying. What you're saying is meaningless to me. What is meaningful is what you are not saying. You haven't described how much it's going to cost. You haven't described what senior means to you. You haven't described how do you have a contract so that that housing turns into other types of housing after 10, 15, 20 years? You haven't discussed that. I'd also like to know what, what's the other issue? Let me see. Oh, was an opportunity zone, was an opportunity zoning used in order to get into that area? The development that went up on, that's going to go up on the corner of 7th and Virginia? That one was initially slated for senior housing. Oh, of course, who morally would object to any senior housing going in? That's how they slide it in. And then afterwards, all, then afterwards, it's, once it gets approved, then all of a sudden, it becomes other types of housing. So, there's a lot of sneaky shenanigans going on in my city and I, I don't approve, I don't approve of it and I don't like it.
Thank you. Kathy Sutherland. Welcome, Kathy.
Good morning, not good morning. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kathy Sutherland and I'm a resident and past president of the, of Delmas Park and a member of the Derridan Area Neighborhood Group and we call ourselves the Dang. I'm hoping that you've all seen our letters. And I'd like to thank Kelly Klein on the mayor's staff for our frank conversation in which she rightfully pointed out that the letters sent in were confusing and really had little to do with the project. She was right. They were actually directed to planning staff on the process. And we hope that Councilmember Peralas will just give a little bit of time to clarify the exact use for this site. It's called a residential care facility or a senior living facility and those are, those have different definitions. This project is moving forward at the same time as neighborhood leaders are deeply concerned with the Derridan Station Area Plan Amendment process. While we understand that this project meets the current criteria and should be approved, we are also keenly aware that it will not meet the standards in five months. Normally, this wouldn't be a problem. We're all expert jugglers and can think and think on multiple levels at the same time. The problem comes from the multiple conversations we've had with the planning staff in one-on-one and public meetings. When we asked staff to lower development heights of up to 295 feet on lot lines next to existing neighborhoods in only three very small areas of the 240 acre staff, staff paints us as anti-housing. This is the furthest thing from the truth. We have a. We have a long history of supporting dense housing and affordable developments. This disrespect and tension with the planning staff has soured our relationship with Urban Catalyst. We couldn't consider supporting a non-housing project for fear that the loss of housing units would be used by the planning department to justify denying our request to lower heights in other areas. This isn't fair to anyone. Look, we look to council's leadership to heal a void in community outreach. We ask that you direct the city manager to assign new staff with strong community skills who want to work with us to create a better relationship and a better Deriden plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Ben Leach.
Good evening, Mayor, members, members of council. This is Ben Leach, Executive Director of the Preservation Action Council of San Jose. Just want to observe that in the presentation, it was, it was acknowledged but not, not highlighted that three residential, existing residential properties, older, not technically historic, but turn of the century buildings are being proposed for demolition. We understand and agree with the 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 sequoia determination that they probably aren't, they don't rise to the level of being city landmarks, so they're not considered historic resources from sequoia standards. But they, in our opinion, would very well have been considered structures of merit. And that determination was not made and didn't need to be made by the by the secret process, but is is sort of a a plainly acknowledged feature of the DSEP plan that these structures of merit contribute to the character of the neighborhood. And there are certain steps that we think are reasonable in addressing these these structures of merit. Now, this is, this is indicative of a larger problem, that that huge swaths of the city and huge swaths of of this neighborhood, which is an extremely hot neighborhood for development, have never been inventoried. So, you know, the, the, this is the process that we think should be flagged. And when development is proposed for areas that are very vulnerable, that the inventory should be more proactive than it is. Historic and older houses are affordable by definition. And we're losing them at a time when the city is trying to prioritize the preservation of existing houses. And it's really at cross purposes. And we would hope that in the future, this won't be the last development, that there is a a better process for avoiding the loss of our historic building stock. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Lane.
Mayor Licardo and Council, Michael Lane, Spur San Jose Director, we're pleased to strongly support the proposed project before you tonight. The applicant has engaged in extensive outreach with the neighborhood, and as always, Councilmember Peralas has worked diligently with the community to make sure concerns are addressed. The staff and council memos outline significant compromises such as reduced height and increased setback to accommodate neighbors and provide a smooth transition. This type of assisted living facility for seniors is greatly needed in our community. And we urge you to approve the planning commission's unanimous recommendation in support of this attractive project. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabby Chavez Lopez.
Good evening, Mayor Licardo and Council. Gabriela Chavez Lopez, your community leader and Delmas Park resident. I live a few houses down with my toddler from the proposed project, and I'm here to share support. Urban Catalyst has been very transparent and open to the community in our neighborhood, at least since I've lived here, which is now over two years. And I appreciate their willingness to work together and to creating the best project for our neighborhood. I have attended community meetings, backyard meetings, and have seen where they have responded to our requests and our needs that we've voiced as a concern. So I am also aware that they've added four units of affordable housing to the project, which also, which also, as an affordable housing advocate, I'm very happy about. I don't see a need in delaying this project any further as it is not clear to me any DSEP amendments that would change anything in regards to this project. I believe that this project meets the city's needs and the needs of our community and that there is a great need for more senior housing in our area. So please move forward on this project. We need to push forward with these development projects that meet the current DSEP criteria and downtown design guideline criteria. So I just urge the city council to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Neese, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Licardo, members of the council. Scott Neese, San Jose Downtown Association. I think this is the first major senior project we've had in the downtown since the Town Park Towers or Casa del Pleno. We really, this type, it's been a long time. We really need this type of facility. I, I'm, I know with the memory care that's being offered here, my mom suffered from Alzheimer's the last years of her life and and we needed memory care services. I I know that this, with our aging population, there's a real need and increasing demand for this. Plus, part of the diversity of our downtown is is having space for our elders. I do want to point out that this project is a local development team, local architect Thango from ADIS. These are both, both downtown pioneers that are here to stay and and work and be part of our community. I also want to point out that because of the way this project is defined, it is a commercial project and will be paying the commercial linkage fee as well as providing this this much-needed housing in a place where it should be. Appreciate your support tonight.
Thank you. Lila Jamellos. Lila, welcome. Good to hear from you. Forgive me if I just mispronounced your name.
Yes, no, it's Lila Jamellos.
It is Lila. Thank you, Lila. I know we've talked before. Please forgive me.
No worries. Well, so, thank you so much, City Council and Mayor Licardo for giving me this opportunity to speak in support of this project. I live in the Delmas community. This project would improve a corner that has been run down and vacant for years. It adds diversity to the type of housing that we have. There's going to be a lot of really high-density housing coming in in future years, and and this sort of breaks that up as it integrates into our community. I really appreciate Urban Catalyst's outreach throughout the process and the flexibility and the changes that they've made in listening to us as a community. They've been very thoughtful that way. I really look forward to this project moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lila. Valerie Engelbreit, welcome.
Hello, Council. My name is Val Engelbreit, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Carlson Management Group. I got acquainted with the Carlson Management in 2018 when parents were in need of finding an assisted living apartment. I live in Fairfield and decided to look at places within a fifty-mile radius of my location. After looking at several establishments, I was really impressed by a place called Rockville Terrace. It was located in Fairfield, which was perfect for our family. Upon arrival at Rockville Terrace, I was pleasantly surprised by the beautiful and comfortable interiors and roaring fireplaces that gave a homey feel to everyone that entered. The staff was very inviting, and when they greeted their guests, it was very friendly. It was also very clear to me that the residents were very happy by looking around at the lively atmosphere that was offered. I immediately set up a tour and decided this was a special spot, great for my parents. The Carlson Management understands that it's important to each community that they enter. They give a second wind of life to people that their choices have been narrowed. Within these walls, my parents got to enjoy life again. They could emerge from their home now and enjoy others or at, others at their age with events and parties and concerts within their community. I personally feel that Carlson Management extended my parents' life with all they had to offer. I first met Jane, Jason Reyes, the owner of Carlson Management at a fundraiser in Vacaville in which he had employees attending with him. This very generous man has done many great things, not only for the seniors in our community, but for the community itself. One example of his character is during the time of the pandemic, he wrote a personal letter to each community member's family member and gave his personal cellphone if there was any questions or problems that arose. Bottom line is that places like this is needed in our communities to provide a safe living environment for our aging population. Not only do they give a new lease on life, but they do, what they do is provide a great care for the residents and above all, fellowship and friendship that may not have become, that have become non-existent for our seniors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I encourage the council to approve this project tonight.
Thank you. Matthew Reed, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Matthew Reed from Silicon Valley at Home. This is not an affordable housing project. This isn't a place where we would normally weigh in. I wanted to share some thoughts because we have been following this project and the evolution over time. And I think we've been really impressed by the the responsiveness of of the the development team. And particularly the coordination and the ongoing work and leadership of Councilmember Peralas's office. This is important to us because it's an example of what this, this part of our new downtown offers as truly functional integrative space. The access to transit for families of of seniors in this type of facility is really valuable. It opens up opportunities for more different people. It creates diversity in that part of the the plan area and in that neighborhood, and we we think it's really a valuable addition. And we know that planning staff has been bending over backwards and working hard to be responsive and accommodate, accommodate the the balance of city interests in in the plan area. From our perspective, including the critical integration of housing and affordable housing, making sure that we can do the most we can, but while being responsive to the neighborhood concerns. This project does not conflict with the DSEP amendments that are under consideration. And therefore, we think it's really important that it it goes ahead. This is a downtown for the entire city. We think this project can be an asset to that neighborhood. We recognize the challenges going ahead, but the the kind of coordination that we've seen around this project, I think, is a good omen for the future. We we hope you all can support it. Thanks.
Thank you. Jacob? Welcome.
Hi, my, my name's Jake Lavine. Thanks for the time. I would like to see the DSEP include appropriate guidelines for how new development interfaces with existing residential neighborhoods. In in retrospect, you know, we were caught between all of the planning that, you know, continues to go on in our neighborhood and the and the developers were confronted with a sixty-five-foot height limit and did receive feedback from the neighborhood to reduce the height along San Carlos. I, I think if we'd done this differently, the the staff and and the neighborhood would have supported higher height along San Carlos so that the interface with the residential neighborhood to the south, which is an objective to preserve in all of the planning efforts dating back to, you know, the early two thousands, you know, could have a better interface. There's a lot of, you know, distinguished speakers who've commented on the project tonight. But I don't think anyone can say that this really has an ideal interface with a single-family neighborhood. There's a zero-foot setback on all sides. It's it's six stories right up to the edge. You know, the the street section on this very narrow residential street is basically an eight-foot section from the curb to the face of the building. Yes, the the building is set back on the ground floor to ten feet, but even that is not really a comfortable setback for for street trees and what, you know, I would hope there would be some amount of of landscaping at at the base of the building. So, you know, you know, it it concerns me that we're moving forward with very extensive development plans, and this is the best we can do for an interface with an existing neighborhood. I I'd like to see the city work harder to improve the interfaces with the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Alicia, welcome. Good to hear from you.
Hi, Sam. Good to see you. All right, sorry, here. Hi, everyone. My name's Alicia Forbrick. I am the owner and founder of the San Jose Learning Center. I'm, sorry, got my the San Jose Learning Center, which is located on West San Carlos Street, which is very near the site where UC would like to build the senior living center. I've been at the location for over ten years and have been very involved in the local community. Personally, I am in great support for the senior center that UC would like to build. I have taken care of my own father for over twenty years as he greatly suffered from Parkinson's disease. I was desperate at many times to find a nice place for him to receive living support, but the options in the area are slim. The few senior centers that we have been to were not ideal in terms of cleanliness, location, and quality of service. Therefore, I took it upon myself to take care of him at home, which was extremely physically meant and mentally challenging. My father passed away a few years ago, but if he were still around today, I would have been very excited to introduce him to the Delmas Senior Living Center that UC plans to build. Besides the senior center, I am a great supporter of Urban Catalyst as a group. I do believe that they select and design their projects for the interests of the community in mind. Although I understand there are some concerns with the neighbors, I, I think the concerns can be successfully addressed and overcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Sotegren, sir, final, final public speaker.
Hi, Mike Sotegren, Preservation Action Council. I want to start by saying thank you to my city council and staff for the hard work you guys do every day. So even in disagreement on projects, I'm really proud to be a citizen of San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Just want to address, you know, a personal comment about this kind of housing. My mom recently passed away. She went through the transition from assisted living to memory care, so I compliment the developer for integrating those two concepts because that makes the transition easier for the family. It makes it easier for the residents. One of the concerns that I see with the project, and it's, it's a gentle concern, is the city is envisioning a future with less and less cars around developments of all types. And it's really, really important to the residents of a assisted living facility, and especially in memory care units, to have access to parking, and that can be all hours of the day if mom or dad is having a hard time. So I don't know that there's enough parking in this project to accommodate the times of day when there might be need by the residents, but I just bring that up for thought. Really, from a preservationist standpoint, we hate to see those three turn-of-the-century buildings go. It's yet more, you know, Urban Catalyst isn't the only one that's, you know, developing on these, on these buildings. But what the concern is the cumulative impact, and each of these projects in and of themselves make good cases. But Mayor and council persons, I'm just asking you to envision what it's going to look like from San Tana Row to eighty-seven if we don't take a look at the cumulative impact of all these mixed-use developments from stem to stern. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Person with the phone number in the ending, eight 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 eight. Welcome. I think your device is still muted. I I think you need to dial, I think it's the asterisk six. Correct, or is it nine? Henry, forgive me.
Star six.
Star six, yeah, star six. If you could dial star six, your phone will be unmuted, then we'll be able to hear you. Okay, your, your device still appears to be muted. If you could dial asterisk six. If not, we'll go back to council comment. Okay, I see that it appears we're unable to hear from you. I'm I'm very sorry for the trouble. All right, we'll come back to the council. Councilmember Frost.
I'm muting here. Thank you very much, Mayor, and in to our planning staff and developer and to In to our planning staff and developer and to all of our public speakers who came out. And stuck with us today. Been a, been a long, long day, a long evening. And, you know, it's not uncommon to reach these decisions and with varying. Points of view from the community. And though I know we can't satisfy everyone, hopefully I can help clear up some of the. The concerns that were brought up today and over the past, past couple of days. So I shared in our memo, I wanted to commend the, the community and the developer for working together and with our office. To put forth this project. We appreciate the applicant responding to my office request. To stay within the confines of our currently approved 2014 D S A P. Updates rather than to preempt the, the current update that is happening in the Deer Nostation area for. Excuse me, and, and I want to thank them for diligently responding back to all the community feedback. I want to thank Tang Bo from ADIS Architecture for his world-class design work. Architecture is certainly a form of art and, and at times and, and it's noteworthy to highlight. The design here by a Vietnamese-owned architecture firm. In regards to the, the, the use of the building, I did want to address. The comment from the letter that was sent yesterday, January 25th, and I understand there was a concern. With the subject line. And which was titled the Delmas Senior Living. Which is actually what is entitled in our planning commission reports is what the applicant has chose to name this project. And there is some confusion between a residential care facility versus a senior living property. And, and to, to be clear, what I understand this project. Will be is an age restricted state licensed register, excuse me, residential care for the elderly. Or R C F E facility. It's not an age restricted market rate housing community. And, and I certainly myself, right, was confused in regards to. The nuanced difference there and really the, the confusion in the title itself. And so I, I did want to invite up Jason Reyes from Carlson Management, who will be the operator for the project. To see if he can expand further on what we should actually expect to see. Out of an R C F E or a residential care for the elderly facility. If Jason's here, if we could bring him up and unmute him.
Thank you, Councilman Paralas. Jason Reyes here from Carlson Management. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can. We can hear you fine. Thanks.
Excellent. So, uh, correct. We, what we are developing here, what we will be building is an R C F E. A residential care facility for the elderly. We are licensed by the Department of Social Services, which is governed by the state of California. We are, the, the general nature of the facility is, is seniors in their 80s. In fact, you know, I own and operate eight communities throughout the Bay Area. Manage over 600 residents and, you know, out of that 600 residents. The primary profile is an 82-year-old widowed woman. And, and that's, you know, there's a lot of reasons that go behind that, but essentially, yes, this is a licensed facility. It is age restricted by the definition of the state. So the state, the Department of Social Services and our license mandates that nobody under the age of 62 is allowed to move in. And every square inch of this building will be licensed and will follow the guidelines of the state and the Department of Social Services. Under the R C F E license.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Certainly, again, you know, I think, appreciate the understanding there and the restrictions in regards to. The fact that we are talking about a particular population. And specifically seniors are those for the most part over 62. And certainly those in need of residential care. And, and I definitely would echo some of the comments that Scott Neese made it. And that we don't see these types of developments enough. And so. And definitely looking forward to, to this opportunity for our, our community members. And hopefully that provides some clarity for my colleagues in the community. In, in regards to. The, the D S A P update. And the larger issue there, as stated in the memo, I understand there was. Right, a call to delay or defer the project until approval of our D S A P update. I personally believe that would be counterintuitive as there, there may be a possibility for this project to go up to 110 feet. Now, that may not be the case, but the likelihood here is, is that we have. Likely a low bar with the current plan as our, our D S A P update is specifically strategizing to increase density. And so I did want to ask a question of our planning staff. To see if you could respond to the, the concerns regarding how this. Commercial project may impact the decisions on the heights and the density in our D S A P plan update.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosalynn Huey, Director of P P C E. So as you're aware, staff have been working on the amended Deer Nostation area plan since, gosh, early. 2020. In the spring of last year, we actually released. What we considered our initial height concepts. For the amended D S A P. And we thought this was really important to get out early in the community to share our initial thoughts. Primarily because one of the main reasons we are amending the D S A P is because of the city council's. The heights in the, in the D S A P area. So we know that. Maximizing those new heights was something very important to the city council. And so we got our initial recommendations or concept out early. And at the time when we first released those concepts, this particular area in the D S A P. Was looked at at a height of 110 feet. And that's where we're still considering, we've released the, the draft amended D S A P last fall. And we're in the process now of doing continued community engagement. We are going to be finalizing. The amended D S A P and bringing it to council obviously later this spring. So currently where our thinking is right now for this particular area is. A height limit of 110 feet.
Thank you. And I recognize, right, that's, that's still in, in, in flux. And so we, we haven't solidified that, but I think. Certainly, as I, I mentioned as well. You know, the trajectory overall in the D S A P area is, is going up and, and certainly higher and more dense. And so, and that was a big reason why as well, I, I encouraged our developer to, to try to stick within the, the currently. Approved D S A P plan. And so in, in regards to. The concerns on the, the southern property line there. As was stated in our, our joint memo, we make some recommendations in regards to things like green screen. Landscaping features. And I, and recognize there's concerns from the neighbors and as we heard today. In regards to the, to the setback or lack thereof, quite frankly, of, of the setback on the southern property line. And, and just to be specific with my, my colleagues. Any development would have to follow our, our current downtown design guidelines. And this one does. And what our guidelines state is that. For a development that is 70 feet or lower, that it could have this, this zero. Foot setback, essentially going up to the property line. And then anything above 70 feet would then be required to have a setback. And so this is below that 70 feet. Again, as I stated in the opening, you know, there certainly are, are always differing, differing opinions. On where our policies should lie. But our, our current approved guidelines will allow a development that is under 70 feet to, to not have. A setback even if it is adjoining to an R2, which this general plan actually on the southern end is. Even though currently it's a commercial lot, it is, it is planned for residential. So it, it does follow the guidelines. We may have. Community members with concerns on those guidelines. Those also change periodically. And so there's certainly opportunities to go in and update those. But I think the reality is, is that we, we've tried to strike a balance between the development and density. The, the amount of housing that we're looking for, especially in the downtown core. And what would be acceptable and not. And this 70-foot threshold for that setback. Is, is where we've landed. And so this project falls within those guidelines. And. And hopefully that can, can address or clear up some of the concerns maybe that. My colleagues might have had in regards to that. Lastly, I know that staff has been working with the neighborhood to address concerns and I know that staff and community members have tried to work together. This is not an easy task. I've sat in on many of the virtual community meetings and I think that perhaps. Channeling all the feedback through one conduit might be helpful. And as was requested by community members, I, I would like to ask Rosalyn one more thing, which would be, if it would be possible to assign a community. Assign this community, excuse me, a designated staff member to be a liaison.
Thank you, Councilmember. We have been working with the neighborhood for, for several months and. Continuing to look forward to working with them on the D S A P amendment and obviously other projects in and around their community. And sure, if it's going to help to streamline the amount of information. And we understand there is a lot of development going on in the area, a lot of information to decipher. So we would be glad to establish a single point of contact for the community if that would be helpful. Because obviously it's important to us as well to get the communication very open. And to make sure that the community is getting the information they need in order to provide us the feedback that we do want to see. So we will be glad to do that.
Thank you. And I'm hopeful that that, that can help as well moving forward. So again, appreciate Rosalyn, you and your team's work and everybody's participation, our community members as well tonight. And I'll make the motion to approve the memorandum that I co-signed with the mayor, Councilmember Davis, Arianez and Mayhan.
Thank you. Councilmember Mayhan.
Thanks, Mayor. I assume we're moving forward with this, but I, I just wanted to quickly add that I'm, I was proud to sign on to this memo. And, and thank you to Councilmember Paralas for his leadership on this and the opportunity to, to be a part of it. My, my father's suffering from Alzheimer's and, you know, this is a personal anecdote. My family's had a really hard time finding. A care facility placement for him, especially at a price point that we can afford. And as I think we all know. For, for these kinds of placements, like our entire housing crisis, we just don't have enough supply. And while I know development is hard and change is difficult and the changing character of our neighborhoods is hard. And I don't really want to rehash debates over the size of the project. You know, I do think. This isn't a great location and I really think an argument could be made that given that we, we build these buildings for. 50, 100, maybe more years. And they're expensive and time-consuming to build. And this particular development is, is located in really an incredible location on a, on a major thoroughfare with access to transit and, and a pretty good walkability score. And serving a vulnerable population, I, I just, I can't think of a better place where we'd want to maximize. The use of the land to support as many people as possible. So just, you know, I wanted to add my voice to those. Particularly members of the public who spoke so eloquently. In supporting this as part of a broader vision for a, a more inclusive and vibrant city and especially downtown core that just has so much potential. So I'm, I'm personally excited, just, just wanted to add that quickly and appreciate the opportunity to sign on. Thank you, Councilmember Paralas. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thanks to all the members of the community who came out to speak on, on all sides here and appreciate that. Deng and, and many Delmas neighbors have been working. You know, putting in a lot of hours in addition to their, all their own daily responsibilities of, of work and family. To advocate in positive ways. Recognizing there's going to be significant change to this neighborhood and obviously wanting to ensure that change. Doesn't disrupt what is important and most precious to the residents in Delmas and the surrounding area. So I appreciate their advocacy. I appreciate that occasionally as a city, we. Can often be moving very fast and that means. That we may not be paying attention to, to every detail that we should be. And we're going to be having to continue to go back and revisit as our residents point out shortcomings. So we're going to continue to do that, but I'm convinced that we've got a team that's committed to ensuring that we do this well. We do this collaboratively in that area as we. Should be doing throughout the city. And I also want to thank Councilmember Pross for his leadership. Urban Catalyst certainly for their investment in this very needed resource for our community. And I, I know the argument that has been made that somehow or another, because it's a residential, residential care facility that. The residents won't be active enough to be using transit, but I'm pretty confident that the 50 or 60 employees certainly will be. And those are transit-dependent residents we absolutely need to serve and that will be vital. Lifeline for them to get to work. So I, I appreciate the location of this as well. Thank you. Thank Do for. What appears to be at least preliminarily a very vibrant design. Great to have a local architect involved, leading the charge as well. So I look forward to, to seeing the, the shovel sit the ground and, and hopefully adding a great resource for seniors in our community. If there's anyone else who'd like to speak. Okay, let's vote.
Hi.
Paralas.
Hi.
Roscoe.
Hi.
Rosa.
Did you say Davis?
Davis, sorry. Arianez. There was a pause because I knew I did something wrong. I was like, I missed. Arianez. Ollie.
Hi.
Mayhan.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Licardo.
Hi.
Back to Cohen.
Hi.
And Arianez. A marking absent. Thank you.
Okay, everybody, we're on the last item of the evening. Item 10.4, privately initiate general plan amendment. And a conforming rezoning on property located 790 Portsmouth Wood Drive and Bret Hart Drive. There is a presentation. Take away Rosalyn.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a second. I have to pull up the correct presentation. Just a moment. Right, so the item before council tonight, this last general plan amendment also includes a conforming rezoning. And this is for an 8.6 acre site located in the Almudon neighborhood area. At Portsmouth Wood Drive and Bret Hart Drive. And this is actually property. Under PG and E that currently has electrical utility structures. It was actually formally reserved for a PG and E substation, but that project was, was not built. So this slide shows you both the existing land use designations and the proposed land use designation. So the change is from existing transportation utilities to residential neighborhood, which is a land use designation. to residential neighborhood, which is a land use designation that supports primarily single-family development. This slide shows the existing zoning, which is actually a combination of the agricultural zoning district. There are also that are properties in the project site that are currently unzoned. And the proposed zoning would be R one A, single-family residence. A community meeting for the project was held on August twenty-fifth of last year. The key concerns that we heard from residents included questions about the procedural process and the timeline for the project, as well as questions clarifying the type of residential development, clarifying that it was for single-family home development and not multifamily. On December ninth, the Planning Commission heard the project and voted that the council consider the negative declaration, approve the general plan amendment, as well as the rezoning. And Mayor, I believe the project applicant, Summer Hill Homes, is on the call for either a presentation or available to answer questions. There's Denise Cunningham there.
Thank you. Appreciate your time this evening. This is Denise Cunningham, Vice President of Development for Summer Hill Homes. And for those of you who aren't familiar with Summer Hill, we're a local builder in the Bay Area, have been in business for over forty years and provide a diversity of housing specializing in infill development. And this property is ideal for small infill development. We're currently in contract with P G and E to process the zone change and the general plan amendment. And once this process is complete, we will look at proceeding with design-level work. Summer Hills engaged the community on four occasions. We had two outreach meetings with the neighborhood in early March. We participated in the city's outreach in August of twenty twenty. And we had a follow-up Zoom meeting as well in September with the neighborhoods. So we've listened to the community and we will take their comments into consideration once design-level work begins. And we would schedule a new meeting to continue that outreach and that dialogue. Like to thank you for your time this evening. And really, I'm here to answer questions if you have any.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, then, we'll go to members of the public first. There any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item ten point four? This is general plan amendment and conforming rezoning on the site at Portwood and Bret Hart. Mr. Soto?
Yes, good evening again, Council, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. My question would be to the council, why is this? Why is there not a challenge for a multifamily designation rather than single-family home? I agree with Councilman Mahan with his comments that there's just a housing shortage. I agree totally. So I would ask his his support in with this particular issue to re-articulate that argument to Summer Hill. Because why does certain areas of this city? Why are they permitted to have that type of designation? Whereas in certain other areas, there's just this real push for concentrated density housing. And we hear the, you know, we hear the bad, we hear the roars, and we see the banners of people really pushing for high-density housing. But in this particular area, however, there is a different tone. You know, and 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 I'm concerned about that. You know, I'm really concerned about this creation, this constant creation of enclaves of single-family homes. And they feel this sense of entitlement and this sense of exclusivity as a result of that. And we, as a city, are actually complicit in that when we don't challenge the developers and the home builders or challenge ourselves and say, you know what, man? We no, we got to start, this is the direction we got to go. That's just all there is to it. We got people dying in the creeks. We got people dying as a result of homelessness. You know, I was just homeless recently. So that was a that was one hell of a challenge in this city. That was one hell of a challenge. But I rose up, my city, my county was able to get me, dust me off, and keep going. So I would ask that question and challenge Mr. Mahan if he can articulate that argument to Summer Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, I was taken surprised to see single-family permits, but I can guess because of the it's not along a dense corridor. Maybe one of the reasons, a little more explanation on that. And I think the more homes we can build, the better. And we we know, we obviously, it's not that simple because there's so many different designations. I do know that we do need more affordable housing. If there's some way to make single-family homes affordable around here, which I don't think is possible, it might be something what the other gentleman was talking about maybe to look at. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. Happy New Year to you. All right, let's go back to council. Councilmember Mahan?
Question for Rosalyn. Hi, Rosalyn. My understanding is that we are being asked to vote on a rezoning, a rezoning, but that the developer could come back at a future date if they wanted to propose a denser development. Is that correct?
Thank you, Councilmembers. So the action that the council is taking tonight is actually on the general plan amendment. So there's actually a change in the land use designation because the property was former or soon-to-be former P G and E. It had a transportation utilities land use designation. And so we have to, first of all, change that designation to allow residential. So that's what the applicant is proposing. They are also proposing the rezoning. And Councilmember, you're right, the next step for this applicant would then be to submit a development permit. And that would be the time that we would see the actual project. We would see the layout of the lots. There would be discussions, you know, about the setbacks, about the heights, about the architectural design. And it would be at that time that staff would review that that portion of the project.
Great, thank you. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we clarified that for the members of the public who who commented. So the developer has an opportunity to come back and actually propose the number of units that might go on this site down the road. Great, that's that's helpful. Great, okay, well, then I'll just I'll leave the rest of my comments until that potentially comes back to us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do you want to make a motion, Councilmember Mahan?
Yeah, sure, sorry. Yes, I'd like to move that we that we adopt the general plan amendment and the rezoning.
Second? Motion and second? Any other comments? Questions? Okay, let's vote on the motion.
Arenas?
Aye.
Peralos?
Aye.
Cohen? Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Barza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley? Foley? Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
Going back to Foley? Pam?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And for item ten point three, I got a text from Councilmember Arenas indicating that my councilmembers, Asparza and Arenas, intended to vote yes on ten point three, but they were kicked off.
Okay. All right, thank you. I know the rain's causing a havoc out there. So we are now done with the agenda. We're on to open forum. Everyone has like to speak has two minutes to speak on any item that is not agendized. Mr. Soto?
Yes, this is directed, at least the start is to Councilwoman Carrasco. Councilwoman, I'm well. I am okay. I was, I I hit a really rough spot. You know, I'm a poor Chicano in San Jose, and sometimes that is a that in itself is a challenge. You know, but, you know, like our ancestors and the Campesinos in times past, we're resilient people. And we can rise to the occasion when, you know, just given a little cariño and a little bit of support. So I just wanted to extend that to you and let you know that that I'm well. For the rest of the council, thank you, Councilwoman Peralos, for the suggestion of the liaison. I think that would facilitate a lot of the like missing pieces, like they're only talking to this one person or they're talking to this person. And these people are informed, but the general public is not informed, especially with that area. That area is my cariño, that's my love. You know, and it is the most redlined area in the city. You know, we have to talk about that. We this is Ericade and has to be put on the shelf for a minute, man. His billions don't impress me. What impresses upon me as a citizen of the city is the fact that it is not confronted, the redlining that created that area in the first place. So I really appreciate this liaison. I hope you post it on your site so I can be in contact with that liaison and talk with them, get to know them, then get to know me. And we that it facilitate that process in terms of communication with the public. So thank you for that. And also, lastly, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Arenas for your views on making a viable pathway to our youth towards internships, not just, like you said, not just an internship for a little while, but actually a pathway to these types of industries so that they not only are viable employees, but viable citizens to the city that raised them. Thank you, peace out.
Thank you, Mr. Darby.
Well, I I want to just say thank you to all of you. It's been a really rough year, and that's this two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, Mr. Jones, once told me, don't read the comments in online posts. And I have to admit that we need to get back to that because I refuse to believe half or whatever, whoever voted for the other administration are terrible people. I will, I don't believe that. I think some may have been, but we've just got to get past all that. We do have to hold people accountable for what happened on January sixth. That was planned sort of outside the purview here. But the council here really has made a difference in my life. I wouldn't have a place to stay in my retirement if you didn't push, especially you, Mr. Jones. And I thank you for that. That I have a because I live in a mobile home park. It was transferring, and everybody got together and worked. Wasn't easy at first. A lot of my neighbors aren't here anymore. Their homes are starting to come apart. But it is the right way to go. I'm sad that they couldn't have kept the transfer to affordable housing. But it's hard to put that on a family. They're doing what the best they can with what they had. The land here is just gold, comes to that. But what's really gold is you folks and us and people. People are far more important than land, money, or anything else. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Darby. Thank you. Mr. Soto?
Yeah, just want to add one quick comment. As a city, as we start looking at more of these R C F E facilities, I guess I would just ask planning, it's been my experience that that means there's going to be an engine company at the facility every night. So from a access standpoint, you know, for our firefighters, you know, to provide that support that is common for facilities like that, I just wonder how that fits into the access at the facilities as well, just for future thought. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I believe those are all the members of the community who wanted to speak. The meeting is adjourned. Everyone's please stay healthy and stay dry.